All right, we have a quorum though. I know Chris will be here late. I guess, oh, everybody's here except for Chris. So if I can, I guess I'll call the meeting to order at 7:02 PM on Tuesday, March 15th. And let's see, I'm trying to see the agenda. Gino, actually, do you have it up? Do you mind just reading the agenda real quick for us?
Sure. Items not anticipated by the chair 48 hours in advance, then minutes. There are no hearings. Current planning board business, opera funding, potential projects. Town meeting warrant articles update Maple Sanger, Washington Engineering. Citizens petition regarding open space subdivision bylaw. George Fisk discussion of planning board regulations regarding streets right of way. Comment letter on DHCD draft guidelines for MBTA communities. Updates on ongoing development projects and then other business reports on meetings with other boards and town planner report.
Okay, I know we can, we can review minutes without Chris here. I, I think I understand that we can also take up George Fisk since. Eric, just give me a heads up on what your, you're, you've got a conflict also. What are you, which are the topic agenda items?
I was just curious. I was strictly curious. I can watch the recording and follow up with George afterwards. Just what the nature of it, what the right of way, just something that interests me, something that's, you know, part of my day job and just, you know, what, this is a fundamental nature, even without the discussion.
Yeah. No, I guess, Gino, or you think we can go ahead and with this topic item, this item, yeah, item topic?
If I just get an idea, I'm just gonna switch over. I have to go to the library meeting.
Gino, did you have a background or do we want to just ask?
I was just gonna, I was just gonna quickly say that the proposal is to, last year, we changed the right of way from 60 feet to 45 and the proposal is to change it back.
Okay.
And I, my understanding is the proposal at the time in our rules and regs was thinking along the line of kind of green development and reducing pavement. And some reflection throughout the center of town, we have a 60-foot right of way and that does not necessarily mean we have a 60-foot wide roadway. But George, if you'd like to present, we'd welcome you to present.
That's essentially it, Addie Mae. The, the right of way requirement of 60 feet has been in place for many, many years. And I was just, I was frankly a little concerned to find that it had been reduced, actually reduced to the amount of 45 feet. And I think my sense was that the planning board was, wanted some leeway with regard to pavement width for roads that might be put in. And subdivisions at, at some point in time, and I understand that I, I had a subdivision number of years ago where I went to the planning board and asked for. I was looking for a little latitude on trying to not have the roadway that I was to put in be not quite so wide. And there was a reason why I, I sought that and the planning board agreed, agreed with me. And so I did have a, a change on the width requirement to not be quite as wide as, as it otherwise would have been. I also, at the same time, where I'd done this, there was a requirement to put in a sidewalk on both sides of the street. And I was able to persuade the planning board that I didn't think that was necessary and that all the houses that were being, going to be constructed were all on one side of the road. So we were able to make a change there. And that was, that was something the planning board had the right and the ability to waive, and they did. And I think it was, I think it was wise. With regard to this, I think, I, I think it, it makes sense to give the planning board the latitude to make decisions with regard to road widths. But not with the right of way of 50, 60 feet has been not only in place a long time, but it's, you know, if you go down to 45 feet, you've essentially reduced it to number that's, that's below the 50-foot requirement for a lot, a backlot. And I also think, I mean, I can think of a situation and that many years ago, I owned a very large tract of land. I was, and I was putting a plan in place for it and it, it did allow for large lots to be created. And I did have some large lots, but I was looking to restrict without putting in a conservation restriction or that kind of a permanent restriction. I was looking for a way to restrict the lot so that I knew this piece of property I had wouldn't in some further point in time be developed to, to an extent that went beyond my wishes. And it was, I had worked with civil engineers to do all this with surveyors and it all made a lot of sense. And in that instance, the, the, the roadway width was, and this is, gosh, this goes back 35 years ago, was 60 feet. And, and I, and I was able to structure the lot so that they didn't have 60, they actually had 50, which made them legitimate lots, but not subdivisible lots. And I was, I was a bit taken aback when I learned that the planning board had actually, I, I should have paid more attention. But when the planning board decided to reduce the, the, the frontage for, for, for a roadway from 60 to 45 feet. I didn't understand the rationale. If it has to do with pavement, I understand it, but it doesn't, it doesn't have anything to do with pavement. And I think it, I think it puts the town in an untenable situation with, with an awful lot of property in, in Sherburne.
Gino, this is in our rules and regs. So do we, if we were to, as a planning board, decide we wanted to reconsider and possibly go back? Do we need to hold a hearing or how, so we need to post it? Does it need to be published in the paper hearing or just posted in two weeks' notice in the town clerk?
No, it needs to be published in the paper as well. Yes.
Okay. I mean, I think it's something that we, I think there's, you know, there's always a lot of thoughts. Marion, I know, put a lot of thought into it. I know she's just joined us, but I think for further discussion, unless Marion wishes to say something, I'd like to ask the board if they are in agreement with posting that we have a hearing. I believe the first hearing date would be April 5th. Is that correct, Gino? Did that be the?
I believe, yes, I believe so.
The meeting on April 5th? And that gives us that we'd have to, you know, publish it right away. Would we have enough time to publish it? Or do we need to go?
Yes, I believe if I do it tomorrow, I think we'll be all okay.
Okay. Can I have a motion to open a hearing to further discuss the, making a change to go back to the 60-foot frontage for roadways?
If you may, if, if not offline, if I may just ask, you had made a comment at the start of your comments that Marion has just joined us. Marion has also been on the board at that time and may have some more history or perspective to possibly provide if she would be so willing. I know you came into this late, Marion.
Yeah, sorry.
Talking about the street width.
We're talking about the right of way with, for subdivision roads. I, I, I'm sorry, I came a little late because I, I didn't look at the website. I ran to Town Hall. So that's why I'm late. But yeah, this was done when we were going through and making a lot of revisions in the rules and regs to fit the new open space subdivision bylaw. And one of the, we talked about reducing the, the right of way because of the very wide subdivision roads that we now have. And if you've already said this, Addie Mae, I apologize. They have very right, wide right of ways, but to accommodate a very wide pavement area. The main purpose was to reduce the amount of pavement in open space subdivisions in all subdivisions, actually. This would apply to all subdivisions. And the revisions we were making in the rules and regs did apply to all, they do apply to all subdivisions, lots of environmental improvements. In the process of doing that, we thought, well, if we're going to reduce the pavement, tell me, correct me, Gino, if you have a different memory, but this is, this is my memory. If we're going to reduce the pavement to, from 24, which I believe it is now, to 22 or 20 feet, why do we have such a wide right of way? That was the thinking. But the unintended consequence that honestly, I didn't think of at the time, but I actually have worried about since is that because of our lot width rules, where a lot that often is a weird shaped lot can't be less than 50 feet wide at, at any point between the road and the house. We have quite a few lots in town where the, the parcel is reduced to 50 feet between the road and whatever's in back, in the house in back. And in cases where the house in back has extra acreage, reducing the right of way for a subdivision road creates the possibility of a subdivision in the back lot of a number of parcels in Sherburne. And that was not our intention. That would open up lands in Sherburne for subdivision development that we otherwise might not want opened up. So that, that was my thinking at the time. And having realized this unintended consequence, I'd like to get it fixed before some developer takes advantage of it. Reducing it back to the 60 feet would basically preserve the lands that we, that were preserved under the original rules and regs.
Eric, you have a question?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I can talk at the hearing as well. I just, um, I just question whether I should go all the way back to 60 feet. 60 feet is actually highly unusual. And I think since it's been 60 feet, very few subdivisions, and Gino can clarify this, have actually been constructed on a 60-foot. Like Cedar Hill Lane was constructed during a period. I think that one has a 50-foot right of way. And I'm not sure, but was Barracat, I think also a 50-foot was constructed under the 60-foot era as well.
Oh, I think Barracat was actually much less. It was, it was barely covering the pavement. We ended up, before the town could accept it, we had to obtain easements for snow plowing on each side because it was so, it was like 20 feet.
So what was?
Cedar Hill was definitely, Cedar Hill was definitely a 50-foot right of way. I remember that one very well because that's when I started becoming knowledgeable stuff. And it was done on the 60-foot era. I want to say this one, maybe two 60-foot right of ways in the entire town. I think. You looked at, if you, you might want to confirm that, you know what I mean? So I mean, that's because 60 foot is unusual. So under 25-foot pavement width, what do you do with those 35 extra feet now that have essentially extended people's properties? Now, the community's utilities are put in that, but we don't have utilities. So you save 35 feet for a gas line. Engineering-wise, it's impractical and I don't know how much it passed the straight face test. But I guess it's been done forever and then just more exceptions and rules have been, have been adhered to. I'd encourage a board to make something that actually is enforceable and make something that's consistent with past practice. That's all I think. I want to say maybe there's one, and Gino will know better than me, there might be two actual 60-foot right of ways. 135 in Framingham, 50-foot right of way. Think about that for a minute. Yeah. I don't think we're building any 135s in Sherburne. And like I said, your subdivision is going to have a 25-foot pavement width. And now you've got 35 feet, just like going into people's lawns and doing whatever for no real reason. I guess what it does, it effectively makes the lots bigger. So you have a one acre zoned area and you do it and you're adding like a quarter acre just with the, you know, frontage. I get with the minimum width aspect of it. Be interesting to see if there actually is any risk to it, but it just, and I've always been intrigued by this since before I was even in college. Because 60-foot, I, you know, I looked around years ago back in the early 90s, couldn't find another community. I don't know what Dover's is or anything else, but in other communities, I, I can't, I don't know if there's other communities that have such a wide minimum width.
Yeah, I can think of other subdivisions. I think that whole Old Field, Harrington Ridge is 60-foot. Bogastow, Bogastow Brook Road, that subdivision has really wide right of ways, I think.
It's the full 60.
A lot of them have the sidewalks, which.
But they were built under the 50-foot rule. So it's 50-foot back and I'm almost sure that in the 60s, it was 50 feet. I doubt they're 60. Because I looked at this once. I don't know if there's, I don't know if there's more than two 60-foot right of ways in the entire town. What's the one off?
I can check before the hearing what, what the other subdivisions are.
Maybe Sewell Brook, maybe Sewell Brook. But it's just interesting because it is impractical. It's something I sensed you would never be built per se and the exceptions are given pretty readily for it. So maybe you put it back just because it existed for a while. But I remember the 60-foot's always intrigued me since even before I've been on the planning board because it's something which is just highly unusual and impractical.
George, did you have another?
Yeah, I, well, Eric, I wouldn't agree with you that, I mean, 60-foot had been in place for years and years and years. And it was by design to exceed the 50-foot. And it was intended on the planning board's part to, to have a, a level of control over development in town. I also would say that some of the subdivisions you're talking about, because I'm familiar. For instance, Barracat, I can tell you right now, it, it need not have been the width that it was. Why, why, why it ended up that way was because the, the fellow who ultimately developed the property, he, he could have, he could have provided a wider right of way. There was frontage all on the street, all of those houses that are back in there, there's significant frontage. And I think it was really probably a way for, for the developer to mathematically get another house lot or two in there by getting that with that frontage requirement modified to a lesser amount. I, I remember Cedar Hill, but I don't, I have not looked into that. You may very well be right on that. I, I can see how that's, that might, might possibly be in 60, but.
Well, just, just to, just to clarify on Barracat Lane, the situation there, from what I understand, what the planning board told me, it was just barely before my time. But that there was enough frontage on South Main to, to create the number of lots he did. But rather than have multiple driveways coming out on South Main, the board negotiated with him to allow the, the dead end cul-de-sac with a narrower width in order to avoid the, I mean, Barracat is essentially a common driveway almost in order to avoid the multiple driveways coming out on South Main.
One, one other little point of correction.
I'm very familiar.
We're not talking about frontage.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Marion.
Oh, we're not talking about frontage. We're not talking about the frontage requirement. We're talking about the width of the right of way for the, for the subdivision road. Just to be, just to be clear. You mentioned frontage a couple of times. So this isn't a frontage question.
Well, the, the right of way is the, all right, right of way, but the, the, the point is the right of way could, could have been a different number. But I understand what Gino's saying. But I, I'm quite familiar with that land. It's, it's a very large, large tract of land. I was, I had it under agreement at one time. And we were going to do the same sort of thing in there. It wasn't going to be a public road. It was actually going to be a private drive. But I think they wanted to have a public road and the only way to get a public road was to, to allow for a, a right of way that was of a lesser amount. But I would have to say that the 60-foot has been a, has historically been the, the right of way requirement for as long as I can remember. Until you made the change. I guess it was last year that you made the change. I've forgotten.
Eric, do you have something more to add?
I would argue strongly to, to going back to the 60-foot requirement.
Okay. Eric, did you have something more to add? And then I think if, if we're, you know, going to keep discussing, I believe we should probably move it to the further discussion to the hearing. Although it is nice to be able to have some his background here. Eric, what were you thinking?
I was just going to counter what George said a little bit where I just believe that it's been exempted more than it's actually executed. So in some ways of a jumble to push it, push it in court, I think it'd be difficult. It's not been the rule. It's been a rule, but it's been more broken than enforced rule as far as a subdivision, as far as that's been. And we've made something realistic 50 feet, I think then you can hold to it. So you've been 60 feet forever. You've almost never done it. And then you can actually say, okay, now it's 50 feet. It was 45, we change our mind, it's 50 feet or something like that. That's consistent with other communities. And now you can maybe enforce it. So a developer can't go to court and said, well, you've broken every 60 foot you've ever done. So now at least, you know, now it's 50 feet, we say, okay, now we can actually enforce that and put that, put that line in the sand. And the last thing I wanted to add, which is no information, is, you know, when you make something kind of unrealistic, like 60 feet, you know, so wide, unnecessarily wide. Then you push people to the EAs, the PUDs and the 40Bs. It's just another thing that pushes them. Because, you know, it becomes an other, otherwise undevelopable or, and maybe that's what the community wants. Maybe publicly owned roads isn't the way we do things. You want the more denser development. I don't know. But it just kind of make, it takes, it makes it further unlikely because you already have the, what is it, the, the one we passed two years ago there? The open space subdivision, which makes it a little more difficult. You get to 60 feet, which makes it more difficult. It just kind of might say goodbye to the, to the whole concept of publicly owned road subdivisions, which might, is, is a model of itself. And if you go back, when Gino does the research on what's 60 feet, what have there been like five in the last 20 years, 25 years? We talked about we're going to open the gates and open the door to all this development. It hasn't happened yet. You know, it's all been non-traditional privately owned infrastructure. I mean, I don't think there's been a public acceptance on a road since, since maybe Cedar Hill. Anyways, I can talk more if I have, if I don't have a conflict, I can talk more at the, at a hearing.
Marion, did you have something else to add?
You know, just to say that I think Eric, Eric is right. It comes down to whether we want to use road width as a way to control development. That's really what we're talking about. And I didn't think of the legal ramifications of not being able to, or defend it in, in court. But on the other hand, no, no developer has, has tried to contest it and say, look, I want to do a subdivision here and this rule is unlike any other town and it's, it hasn't been enforced. So it hasn't been used as a wedge. But yeah, I shouldn't say anymore.
All right. So can I have a motion that we post a hearing to discuss this change on Tuesday, April 5th? On our next planning board meeting?
So moved.
Thank you. Well, in second.
Second.
All right. Thank you, Robert. All right. It's been moved in second and then we'll roll call vote. So Addie Mae is I. Frank?
I.
Robert?
Hi.
Will?
Hi.
And that's all that's here with Chris being absent at the moment. Okay. So we will have 7:15 to the hearing for the rules and regs change for the public right of way. Does that work, Gino, do you think?
Yeah, that's when we typically schedule the hearings.
Okay.
I'll just mention that during the discussion, I was looking on the website and under just the rules and regulations tab, it leads me to a copy of the rules and regulations as of, I think, 2011, in which it's 60 feet. So I'm not sure. There's various other things like subdivision rules and regular, I haven't looked through them all yet. But there's at least one thing marked as rules and regulations, which is perhaps misleading.
That's the, yeah, that's the old version. It needs to, thank you. I'll ask that that be removed because we have an updated version from 2020.
The, Gino, the updated version only has the subdivision rules and regs, not the entire rules and regs, just so you know.
Right, right.
Yeah, that's listed under a separate tab.
Yeah, that's right. And the, the one you saw, Rob, I think is the 2011.
Right.
Eric, did you have something else?
Yeah, just, can other rules and regulations be brought up at the time of the hearing? Like, let's say stormwater.
I, I believe they could be. We would need to post, would we need to, can we be open about rules and regs? Or I don't know how much we want to get down the rabbit hole of every single rules and regs up for grabs. But I guess if there's a specific one that you're thinking of, Eric, it might be a good time.
It's not an opportunity. I can wait if you do an overhaul at some point.
Are you thinking of an overhaul of the stormwater regs? Because that is something we did go through just.
I know, recently. And I see something, I see something little every now and then. So it's just, it's nothing important. If it's a pain in the butt, don't do it.
Well, I mean, I know we were trying to get those updated last year and I thought we updated them. So if there is something little that would kind of bring us in alignment, we can kind of approach this hearing as, you know, somewhat technicalities perhaps. You want to give a quick update on what you saw?
No, I don't have it in front of me right now. This is something I saw like six months ago. So I'm not going to, I'm not going to waste the time right now. And it goes that big a deal.
Well, how about this? Eric, if you find it and shoot it over to Gino. Gino can take a look. Gino, can we as a board kind of agree that if, you know, thinks this is something we can manage in the hearing on April 5th? To go ahead and post it? Does that seem fair or?
Yep, that makes sense to me.
It's, it's not. It was very small. I wouldn't worry too much about it.
No, but it's good to.
The hearing notice can just say stormwater, also add stormwater regs without being that specific when I send it to the paper like in the next day or two. And then we can get the specifics and, you know, make that, post that online. So that, that would work, especially if it is something relatively small rather than.
I think if we do the notice to the paper, is there a way to phrase things in such a way that this is housekeeping essentially? You know, so that people don't think, oh, we're revamping all stormwater regs and, and revamping all subdivision regs. So this is just some cleaning up work.
Let me see, let me see if I can, again, I'll also let you know, maybe it's moved, to be honest with you. Because I don't want to start a hornet's nest. I don't want, I want to start coming in unnecessarily.
All right. So I think we're good on that for now, for now. And let's see. Should we review minutes real quick? And hopefully Chris will be joining us soon. With the minutes from March 1st. Has anyone, has everyone had a chance to review the minutes of March 1st? Does anyone have any corrections or amendments to the minutes of March 1st? All right. And we have a motion to accept the minutes.
So moved.
Excuse me, just, Chris had let me know that he had two very minor changes. They didn't change the substance at all. The first, I, I remember one of them. I don't remember the other one because when I was talking to him on the phone, I didn't, I didn't have a. But the first one was the, it's, he made a statement that the, we lose our safe harbor sometime in June. And he just wanted to remove sometime. So it just says in June. And I forgot the other one, but it was something of that same nature. It wasn't anything substantive.
All right. So we'll call it a grammatical change.
Yeah.
Is everyone comfortable with accepting those changes when Gino gets the specific words? Okay. So a motion to accept the, the minutes of March 1st with the grammatical changes. Okay. And seconded. Okay, Robert. All right. I guess roll call, Addie Mae, I, Robert. Will?
Hi.
And Frank?
Hi.
All right. So motion to pass passes for March 1st minute. Other items on the agenda here. See, Gino, I saw that you posted, you shared that there is a multifamily hearing coming up in a Monday, the 21st, I believe.
Yes.
For anyone interested.
Yes. What that is, is you know how I had previously sent information on CPTC, Citizens Planner Training Collaborative? They're offering a webinar on what these guidelines are about. It's, it's geared toward planning board and zoning board members as opposed to, you know, staff. So I just thought I'd, I'd send that around in case anyone's interested. It's a. So I just thought I'd, uh, uh, send that around in case anyone's interested. It's a free webinar on, on Monday night. I'm pretty sure the recording will probably be available afterwards, too.
Okay, so that is Monday, March twenty-first at six o'clock, and the information is, can be found on the MBTA Communities webpage. So, and there's a requirement to register for the Zoom at six o'clock. Um, and that is with this citizens, what do they call it, Citizen Planner Training Collaborative? I'm sorry?
Yes. Please.
Any other, has there been any MAPC information or updates, Gino? I haven't attended an MAPC meeting in a while, but are there any MAPC updates?
Um, not, not really. The, this MBTA Communities issue is, you know, the, a big one right now. Um, among many towns, the, the last SWAT meeting, um, was, I think it was a week or so ago. You, you know, other towns are also very, very, um, obviously concerned, and will be making comments as well.
So I guess on that note, do we want to, do you have the comment letter that you drafted, or do we want to, do you want to put it up and share it, or have you received feedback? I think you, you presented it to the select board last week.
Yes, and I received feedback from Marion and Daryl. But I believe Chris wants to be here for that discussion.
And we'll hold off on that.
But we have the ARPA funding.
Okay. Um, I know there was, um, there's, there's a lot of discussion of this one point two million, the total amount that was given to the town or authorized to the town of Sherburne in ARPA funding of, about half of that was done at the town was from, was, I guess, a portion of it came from the federal pool and a portion from the state pool. Two hundred thousands already been allocated for the infrastructure at Woodhaven Leland. There's other projects that have been discussed. Welcome, Chris. Um, I, I will say that there, there was, there's some thinking on looking at our, what do we have as a planning board? And I know one thought that had come up was the Goulding, we, we had put the Goulding into the east and west Goulding Street intersection kind of on the back burner when we realized that, you know, making that safer when we were going for the, uh, when we looked at the Sanger Street sidewalk situation, we took that out because of the cost with related stormwater infrastructure. And there was some thinking that because there's clear guidance that ARPA can be used for, uh, infrastructure such as stormwater or, um, similar that maybe we'd want to ask for that. However, I've also been given information that, um, the roadway is up for redoing, and it might be better use of ARPA funds to look at a different project because within potential chapter ninety funds for roadway work. It just might be neater to just keep that intersection as, as something in the site and the stormwater related, um, in the sites of, of when Sean and DPW are looking at that road as part of the five-year roadway management project. So, um, certainly as we're discussing other ARPA ideas, and I'll let Chris take over from here, I just wanted to give the heads up that I think that was thrown out as a, you know, do we want to consider that and go back to it? But I think there's some merits to looking on the list for other ideas and, and, um, not including that stormwater infrastructure. There's plenty of other infrastructure places, but.
Um, Addie May, did that suggestion come from Sean?
It did.
Okay, that, 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 that's all we have to know. So, so, so that idea is a no. Did, did he think it was a, did he think it was a good idea to, um, for, for us to support ARPA funds for another similar project?
Um, he, he did, if there's, uh, he didn't have anything readily identifiable. Um, and he said the Goulding with the stormwater was more part of a roadway infrastructure, and there might be a different avenue that, that there was, with other needs for ARPA that, that might not be the one to go for.
Okay. Did you want me to take over, or do you want to continue? I'll do whatever you.
Go ahead, Chris. Welcome. Happy to have you.
All right, so, so Gino, um, what are your thoughts? As far as projects that we may want to, um, consider asking to be considered under ARPA? Well, um, trying to think if it was ARPA or earmark, although they're pretty similar, I guess. But I had suggested funding for digitizing the records in Town Hall. And Diane said that she actually had already been getting some quotes on that. So I don't know what the quotes are, if it's something that's reasonable to do. But that, that was my primary suggestion.
Okay, I do believe that that, so I know I, just because I was involved with some of getting the quotes from Iron Mountain for digitizing, and when we were looking at it, we were looking at, um, Board of Health, we're basically the whole land use office. Board of Health Conservation Planning and Building, and, um, there is some overlap. The planning boards segment is potentially, I can't remember what exactly the amount, but because it all got rolled in and there, but I think it is definitely something to, this is the opportunity to move us forward and have a situation where different departments can maybe work together more seamlessly. And not have so much redundancy in paper. I've got to believe if we had plans scanned that we'd be able to share right now, potentially Board of Health has a complete set of plans in their drawer, Planning Board has a set of plans in their drawer. Um, nowadays, we do tend to ask for digital versions people, so we can, if we have a, a system, then we can start saving them by address and, and coming up with that library of infrastructure will be a cost beyond just the digitizing. So that is something with, I don't know, Gino, if you've had experience with other planning boards to know kind of then once, how, how do they, how do you keep Board of Health records that need to be kept secure, secure, but have the ability that Board of Health can see what a property plan is that's maybe been saved within.
If, if I can probably answer, I, you know, whenever people wanted to look at Board of Health files, quite honestly, when I was involved, we never I never, like, if somebody wanted to come in and look at something, I would keep an eye on them, because I was always afraid of something being removed from, from a file, where if it's digital, now we no longer have to worry about something disappearing.
Right.
Right, right, Gino? I would imagine so, correct? For the most part, yeah. I'm sure there are ways, cyber, cybersecurity issues where somebody can, can still alter it, but it would be difficult to have. I'm talking about the average employee, the average resident. Um, so, so would you like, and, and I'm just going to ask the board what they think, would you like to, um, type that up as a request that the planning board, if there's, um, residual ARPA funds, to have them consider digitizing all the land use, um, files? Absolutely, I'd love to do that. Okay, um, Rob Wolf, what do you think?
Certainly, it seems like a reasonable use, yeah.
Okay, um, Frank?
So, you're getting agreement?
Yeah, I'm, I'm here, I'm here. I just had to get off mute.
No, no, I said, are you in agreement? I didn't ask.
Oh, sure, yeah, I, I think that's, that, that, that's fine. Is, is there a sense of, you know, kind of what order of magnitude? We're talking like fifty thousand, hundred thousand, half a mil, or something?
Uh, I mean, Board of Health had the most, it, it basically depends on how many plans we had. I, I feel like Planning Board was around it, it was, I think I lumped Planning Board and, and, um, Land Use together, and it was something the, the flat plans are three dollars and fifty cents each page to scan. And so that's where it got expensive, all the, the plans that are in the flat plans, but I I think we were talking about, it was like seventy-two thousand for the whole land use. And then fire and other departments had records, so I don't, I can't find my breakdown, I apologize, but.
That's okay, but, but, but it's a reasonable number.
A reasonable number, it's money wisely spent that would get us long-term benefits and help us long-term. But we're gonna, we're at a risk of losing a lot of stuff. I know, just from my own house, there are no documents on, on my well, insurance for the health because of a fire years ago.
Okay, um, Will, what are your thoughts?
Makes sense to me.
All right, so, so if everyone's in favor of that, Gino, would you?
Steph had one quick statement before we.
That's okay.
Hey, thanks. Um, I just wanted to let you guys know that the intern that was hired by the Groundwater Protection Commission in, uh, co- committee in terms of, um, digitizing, uh, mapping the wells and the septic infrastructure is as a part of her responsibilities, also going to be digitizing certain records to some degree. So some of, some of this will be taken care of by, some of the Board of Health files will be taken care of by the intern. But I think there's still a, a great need and a great demand for that type of activity for the rest of town files.
Yeah, I guess, you know, I don't know if, um, I mean, the one area that really hadn't been discussed, we've got numbers for what does it cost to actually scan and label all of the documents, but then the long-term storage of those digital files will require some infrastructure updates at Town Hall if we choose to um, host with redundancy of some sort of cloud system, or whether we host with Iron Mountain. So I, I don't know if it's worth making, if we're making the request to also build in that reminder as we put forth requests for ARPA funding, because it won't do us a whole lot of good if all of these files are scanned, but then we have no way to store them in a way that we can quickly access them because the server will crash or otherwise.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, I, I mean, what, what I would think is it would be the whole package, and you'd obviously want it backed up offsite somewhere. I would imagine. So, um, so Gino, would you, would you mind writing up a re- a request, um, as you best see fit? Absolutely. And, um.
Chris, may I ask a quick question about ARPA funds?
You may.
I'm in total support of the digitizing. I think that's brilliant. Um, is there a reason why we're not looking, though, at our other sort of plans on capital plans beyond Goulding Street, like sidewalk, the other side of the sidewalk on North Main, or any of the other sidewalks that are on the complete streets list to, because I, it feels like from reading this PowerPoint that there's a pretty huge range of projects, and you could justify sidewalks are supporting the economic vitality of the town, which took a hit from COVID, et cetera, et cetera. So, but I may have been late to this conversation as usual, so.
Um, no, actually, I was late because I had a previous meeting. So I, I, the, the initial conversation was some stormwater issues would be covered, and I knew that there was a stormwater issue down at, um, the Goulding Street intersection before we redid it. Um, but it was sort of conditional to getting the thumbs up by Sean. And, and Sean said, well, it's going to be more complicated than that. That's what Addie May was talking about. So then I, so then the conversation went back to Gino. And, and, you know, basically the land use offices are going to move downstairs, and, and this would be a good time to clean all that stuff up. So.
Marion, I guess I was asking if we could make multiple requests, you know, could we ask to digitize and ask for money from this funding pool to do some sidewalk work? Can we, can we, can we dream big here?
Um, I mean.
I have an answer for that if you want some help.
Well, I, well, what I was gonna say is I would imagine we could, but I don't know how realistic it would be. Marion?
Well, there, there, ARPA fund requests have been coming in, and they're all being kind of put together in the Select Board's office, and that same list was, uh, was used, uh, to give a list for, for, um, what do they call them, earmarks? So that, that's basically uh, the list that I've seen a couple of times. It's a preliminary list, but I just wanted to say that both the digitizing of town records and the town center sidewalk issues are already on that list. But if there's detail that you guys can add, uh, it would be great. But I think the, the first thing to do is to, uh, check, uh, with Diane Morris. I think she's kind of the point person at keeping the list together. And, uh, just see how much detail, uh, they want at this point. Gino, you may already know the answer to that. But I can tell you that both of those things are on the list. And in answer to Elizabeth's question, yes, it is quite fine to put in multiple projects, because depending on how the pieces of the puzzle fit together and how much support different projects get, there, there will be more than one project, and any one board can suggest as many as you have good ideas.
Okay, Marion, do you know when the timeframe, when the final due date is for these? Last Friday. Yeah, I, yeah, so, um, so, yeah, I mean, just because of the time crunch. And again, if, if there's already been another request to digitize things, if we put in another request, maybe that will put a thumb on a scale of two separate boards requesting.
Exactly.
Absolutely, sure, absolutely.
So if the board's in favor, Gino, I would reach out to Diane, and I would just send her down a note saying, um, that would be the request from the planning board, if you could do that.
But do you mind? I have one more comment, if you, if that's okay.
That's fine.
Um, the other thing that occurs, um, to me is, is the technology for, uh, hybrid meetings, which we've talked about a lot in the last year.
That, that's already gone through.
Awesome.
That, that's in process.
But once again, uh, if you have more information on why sidewalks are important and where in town center, making town center more walkable, that was, that's come up several times, and, uh, support for that from the planning board would be great as well.
Yeah, the only, the only problem with that, Marion, quite honestly, is we have such a short period of time to really look at it, and, and, and we still have some projects that we're still waiting. I don't know. I'm, I'm just reluctant to ask unless it's a well-thought-out ask.
Well, it's already on the list, so if you think
Yeah.
should be developed further, you, you support it, fine. If not, you know, that's fine, too.
Okay, so Gino, you can do.
Work, then that's good.
Okay, so Gino, you can do that for me, please? Absolutely. Okay, so I'm, I'm looking at the, um, at the agenda. Unfortunately, I had a dental meeting that I couldn't get out of. So where are we on the, uh, on the agenda, Gino? We're ri- right at town meeting warrant articles. Okay, so has, has, is. His George Fisk already. He did, okay. Do you want to, have we talked about the citizens petition? No. Okay, let's talk about the citizens petition. Has everyone on the board had an opportunity to look at the, uh, the citizens petition? Has it been forwarded to everyone? Yes. Okay. So the citizens petition is a, is a, I find it's a difficult thing, because some parts of it I agree with. The intent, I agree with a little bit. Um, how it was written, I very much disagree with. And I think a lot of these issues can be resolved strictly at the Board of Health level. So if everyone's had an opportunity to read it, my suggestion was that I would like personally, and as a planning board member, I'd like to see this, um, article withdrawn. I would like to see the, um, the applicant work with the Board of Health in conservation, figure out exactly what the Board of Health needs from our support. Bring it back to us, we would, we would have a joint meeting, and if there was some. Bring it back to us. We would, we would have a joint meeting. And if there was something that was worthy of a warrant article, we would support if it were necessary, um, a potential warrant article for two thousand twenty-three. So that, that was sort of my initial, um, the, the, the people that signed the petition, I think the world of. And, but I don't know if they really understand sort of, sort of how the process goes and, and how this would really improperly fit into our bylaws. And, and I consider a bylaws change something fairly significant. And I think that we could probably um, meet some of these um, intents without a change in the zoning bylaw. So, does anyone have any questions? I'm gonna start with the board. Um, Addie May, do you have any thoughts?
Um, just, just the thoughts that I believe, I mean, I sat through the discussion last Thursday where it was, we viewed preliminary in front of the select board and um, I think there is confusion about, I think, I think there's confusion at a broader scale about what happens when a developer comes with an idea before the planning board versus the planning board granting a, you know, a preliminary site approval on a project versus complete approval on a project. And as we've al- always stated, um, when we've had A and Rs that just because it meets all of the zoning requirements does not necessarily mean a house could be built on that lot. So um, I think in general, people get confused. I think that's kind of what's happened here. Sport of Health regulations and conservation regulations are the things that determine then the next, you know, what's buildable.
Um, Will, do you have any thoughts?
No, nothing additional.
Okay, Rob?
Um, well, I, I guess I have a question. I'm not sure I really understand exactly what the intent of this is and what it does. I had the impression from reading it, is it, would it be correct to say that this requires a level of um, regulation on at least the wells that the board of health could optionally require, would, that it would be within the authority of the boarding, board of health to optionally require now? And so it just mandates them to do something that they could optionally do at this time?
Well.
Is that correct?
It, it, it looks like it's asking us to tell them how to do their job. Um. And, 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 and I could pick this apart and, and, and that's not what I want to do. I'd like to really stick with, with the process of how um, a warrant article such as this um, would be produced, number one. Number two, again, I'm very reluctant without import from the board of health to support a zoning bylaw change that has specific language telling the board of health what to do unless we've sat down and discussed it, number one. Number two, if the board of health wanted to put in these changes, and I'm not saying they should be changed, but if the board of health wanted to change them, they could have a public hearing and in two weeks pass these in their own regulations without changing the bylaws, without going to town meeting, without requiring, requiring a two-thirds vote. So, so I don't like this on several levels. Um, and, and that's why I had requested that, you know, if they don't withdraw it and it's defeated, then it's a two-year time period until they can come back with it. Um, I'd rather work together. I'd rather clean up the language, but I really think the board of health needs to decide what they would, would require or what they would need. And if they need our additional input, I'm sure we would be happy to give it. Did I answer your question, Rob, without?
Well, with, without going into the details of what it is, we don't want to do that now. That's fine. So, yeah, I, I think your statement on what the process should be is reasonable.
Okay, Frank, any thoughts?
Agreeing with, 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 with their statement that uh, following due process and a part of that process is uh, the first citizen's petition, from what I understand, that no changes can be made to that petition or to the warrant article until you get to um, town meeting floor. And then if there is to be changes, there is to be debate that happens there and changes have to happen there. It becomes really problematic and messy as opposed to going through really the flow of going through the, the board of health, first of all, and then going through us and, and having these discussions and getting it uh, worded and written right so that it can be, you know, properly implemented. So it, it hasn't followed the process. Um, and therefore there, there's many places where problems could come and, and it gets uh, wrote it down and then has two years to come back. If there's really something that's worthwhile and something should happen sooner and not have to wait for two years. So I'm in agreement with you.
Okay, thank you, Frank. Um, Marion, um, I'm not putting you on the spot, I hope. Is there something you would like to add?
Uh, Chris, I thought you summarized the problem very, very well. Basically, uh, the planning board can't put new board of health rules into the zoning bylaws. We simply can't, nor do we want to. So the, the proper route would be, would have been for these citizens to go to the board of health and and the proponent, the major proponent is a board of health member. And uh, since we worked very closely with board of health on writing, not only the bylaw, but the rules and regs that follow. And there's a lot of reference to board of health regs in there that it's just not appropriate at all to put this into a zoning bylaw. It's a board of health uh, issue. And we support the board of health. If they decide on their regulations, we support them.
And I will just say after, it's kind of just for our planning board reference, um, for those who were not in attendance on Thursday. Frequently comments were made that, I mean, this is specifically to the open space subdivision by law and the comments by this group was that an unintended consequence was discovered due to a recent development. The reality is, is the planning board has not had any open space developments officially for review. So it really hasn't been tested. We have not done an official review of any open space subdivision.
Well, you know, just to call the spade a spade, uh, this came up because of the, of, of Murchison's project on Farm Road. Uh, and, but it's based on uh, kind of a general worry about groundwater in the area, which is, is valid. But it's based on a misunderstanding of the, of the, the law and the process.
Okay, so I, I just want the board to know that if um, if I'm asked to speak on this, what I said to the board is exactly what I would then repeat to advisory or to anyone that asks. Um, I'm not opposed to um, their concerns. I don't like the process and there's no way I would, you know, reference anything that puts um, more regulations on the board of health side in our bylaws, especially if we haven't had a long talk with the board of health and run it by town council. So I'm, I'm very much opposed to this. I'm not opposed to the idea. I'm not opposed to the people. I'm opposed to the warrant article. So, um, if there's no other questions, we will move on. Are there any other comments about that?
Uh, just, just a note that I know it is on the agenda for board of health at their meeting tomorrow night. So we may, you know, hear more about it.
Okay, and um, a- and I will reach out to them and, and I'll let them know that we'll support them any way they can, any way we can. Um. Okay. Comment letter. Do you have that drafted yet, Gino?
I do. You want me to put it up?
I would love to put it up. Now, tha- 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 that, that has been um, submitted to which boards, Gino?
Uh, board of health, Concom and select board.
Perfect. And other than a few minor additions, everyone was pretty much in supportive, correct?
Yes, uh, yes, Marion has some, um, some edits that you'll see on here. And uh, Darryl Beardsley or Board of, on, on behalf of the board of health had some uh, one edit, which is I'll point out, it's, it looks purple on my screen, if it looks that way. The ones in red are Marion's suggestions. And um, I'll go back to the top in a minute, but just to go through, quickly through who, who noted what. Um, the final paragraph is just my addition that we had discussed previously about requesting that the deadline for implementing changes be uh, extended due to most towns having town meetings in the spring. So um, go back to the first page. Um. Uh, you know, I think the, the, the additions uh, clarify, they don't really change the um, the sentiment that was expressed. Um, I don't, does anyone have comments on, on the uh, insertions or, or the, or the main part for that matter?
Um, I hate to read things at meetings, you know, but I'd like just to quickly read it. I'm not gonna read it out loud. I just wanted to just read it real quick.
Sure.
That's okay with the board. Can you scroll up just a smidge, Gino, for me to the second? If everyone else is. Perfect, thank you. Okay. I think it sounds good. Um, I'd like some board comments on it and I'm just gonna go right down the line. Um, Addie May, you okay with the letter as written?
I am. I appreciate the comments that um, Gino and Marion have added. Um, and I overall really appreciate the thoughtfulness of the letter.
Okay, um, Will, you're okay with it?
I'm okay with it. One, one point of accuracy. Do, do we not have a pharmacy now?
I, I was gonna make that comment too.
Oh. Just, just for, just for accuracy.
I, I. Yeah, I just changed my prescription today. They did. And we have a new one, Pine Hill Pharmacy, and they're wonderful.
Yeah.
Oh, no kidding. Oh, excuse me then.
In the same location that the Walgreens were, as are the Eaton's used to be.
Oh, no kidding. Very nice. Oops. Very nice in there. I just, I just switched over my prescriptions today.
Okay, so Gino, if you could make that edit, that would be great. Um, Rob, your thoughts?
I think it looks good.
And Frank?
I think it looks good too. It's, I think it'd be a real challenge to try to meet this in, in Sherborne and um, so some, some red flags need to go up and this starts to do it. Um. I, I just hope that there's some more aggressive um, letters like this that they will see.
Yeah, well, um, right, right now, they're just looking for input and so they want it by the end of the month. So um, so right now, um, I guess we can send it, Gino, if the boy, you want us to vote on it, Gino? I, I, do you think we have to?
I think you could do it by consensus. I don't think it ne- needs a vote.
I think everyone's saying, okay, I'm gonna take that as consensus, if that's okay. Um. At the, at the select board meeting, and I don't want to get too much into, um, with the select board discussed, we'll talk about it later. Um, you know, our, our plan is to um, stay in temporary compliance and meet their deadlines. Um, we still don't know what the final requirements would be if they lower the number to, and who knows what, we don't even know, but let's say they lower the number to, to five percent. As um, I think Frank or someone had mentioned, if they lower it to five percent and Coolidge Street happens, that may suffice. Um. There was a comment at the select board meeting that um, maybe we should resist it a little bit stronger. Um, we can, there's no, been no decision made on that at this point. That's something we can talk about at our next meeting, once we have a little bit more information. Um, but from a planning board point of view, um, independent of what the select board does, and I'm not opposed to what they want to do. They run their own meetings, they run their own thing. Um, my goal for the next year and a half is to, to meet their deadlines and deliverables and, and, and to do our best um, short of presenting a bylaw at the town meeting. Um, and, and for a year and a half, we can play nice and we can sort of stay in um, temporary compliance. Does that sum it up fairly well, Gino?
Yes.
Um, does anyone on the board have any questions regarding that approach? If you feel differently, this is the time. But I, but I think we can have interim compliance fairly easily. As far as total compliance with how it's written right now, I find that highly unlikely. But I'm, I'm hoping and I'm guessing there'll be compromises made and, and then, and the select board has um, other thoughts. Um, as far as how we should um, approach this, um, that's their decision to make. And, and once we know more, um, we'll discuss that. Um, does anyone have any comments? And if Marion, if you'd like to um, say something, you're, you're more than welcome to.
Uh, no, I, I think your approach makes sense and it's compatible, I think, with what the select board would think is a, a long-term goal. That is, if the guidelines are changed to where we could actually meet them, either through Coolidge Street or some other route, that's great. If not, then we'll go, we'll take the, we'll take the nuclear option that
Yeah.
was suggested at select board.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I personally would have a hard time supporting um, a large project of the sort that um, was sort of written in the preliminary draft. Um, but things may change and, um, and you know, I, I, I say all the time, you know, advisory, their job is to do the will of the town. Um, our job is to do, we work half for the town and we work, we kind of work half for the state. And so we have to look like we're um, at least trying um, to play nice. Sometimes we can't. Um, but we'll talk more about that later because um, I don't want to get too far into um, the discussion that was had at the select board meeting, because I think at this point, it's probably unnecessary. Um. Updates on any development projects, Gino?
No, not, not really. Nothing that I'm aware of.
Okay, do we have any reports on meetings with other boards?
There's an MWRTA meeting coming up later this week, but it's just trivial. They're just going to approve a uh, a um, headhunter corporation to look for a new administrator.
Um, now, since there's a, this, this, this may sound like a big ask, but it, would you just like take like almost very brief minutes and forward them to Gino so we could sort of see what's going on at that meeting? Would that be okay?
Sure.
And then, and then at the next meeting, um, if you can just give us a, just a brief update, it's just nice to know what else is going on, especially if Coolidge Street works. Um. You know, we're gonna be hopefully a little bit more connected to them. Um, Gino, town planner report?
Marion has her hand up and just while Rob is on here.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. I, I can't, I can't see where's.
I know, I know. So that's why I said something, but I just, um, Rob, I don't know, just to jog my memory, we're talking about other boards and activities. Have you, are you still the one tasked with trying to get someone from CSX to respond to you about the uh, rail trial, uh, rail bed going into Framingham?
Oh, before he, before he answers, that's kind of a, it passed to me. And, and no, I haven't done it yet.
Okay.
It's in, in process.
Well, that's because Gino's, Gino spends too much time talking on the phone to me.
I know. Well, and then I know just um, yeah, just with, you know, no further developments, but I know um, housing production plan. housing production plan. Did, did everything, did we, do, do we get a contract for Gino or do, do we, is that, did that fall through the cracks a little bit or?
Yeah, well, that, that's going to, that was what I was going to bring up under Town Planner Report.
Okay, Marion, do you want to say something and then we can go back to Town Planner?
Uh, yeah, I, I see that there's no representative from Open Space Committee, so I have to say that, uh, we're, uh, between Open Space Committee and Select Board, uh, I, I have rewritten and, uh, a new application to open the aqueduct for, uh, public pedestrian use. And it was tried, uh, back in 2015, but then the proposal was to open the entire aqueduct, including across the golf course, across the farms. And it was roundly defeated at a public hearing, at least it was, uh, Eric Johnson calls it, the pitchforks came out and, uh, the, the farms were so adamantly opposed that we, we withdrew it. But, uh, with, with a lot of, um, direction from, um, MAPC, uh, regional trails people and, and others in Natick. I've, uh, rewritten a proposal that I think looks, uh, quite good. And I think I did send it, I sent it to Gino, right, Gino?
You did, you did.
Yeah, okay. And it wasn't on the agenda, but just so you know, we're proposing to open the aqueduct to pedestrian travel, uh, but only on the sections where there are, is no private property problem. So it opens only those segments that essentially are open anyway. But this way we have a blanket approval from MWRA to use the aqueduct as a trail. And according to MWRA that I've been in contact with, they like the idea of giving a blanket approval. And then as we can get pieces of it put in place, we can approve it on the local level. We still have control over which areas are actually open to the public and which are not. So this application is just for the blanket MWRA approval.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any other questions?
I just, just had one, one comment, um, a couple of, uh, board meetings ago that we had, uh, it got brought up that, um, the, the development that's on North Main, not the one that's being proposed, but the one that's already being built, like kind of the horseshoe, uh, I forget the number on North Main.
Fifty-nine North Main.
I thought it was, uh, the first house had a, like a frontage on to, uh, North Main Street. And the last house that was being built looked like it was not. Uh, driving by there just a couple of days ago or earlier in the week. It, they are now putting up what looks like a, a front door type of entry on the, uh, the main street direction. So I'm not sure if, uh, if Gino ended up sending a letter to them or not, reminding them of that, but, uh, that was something that the, uh, the planning board had asked them to do and, uh, it looks like they are complying with that. So I just wanted to bring that.
I didn't send a letter. There was no need. I, I just checked with the building inspector and looked at the plans and, and the building permit plan showed that, that entrance was, was there all along.
All right. Any other thoughts, any other comments? Um, if there are none, Gino, Town Planner Report?
Well, back to the housing production plan. Yes, I, I spoke with Debbie Reynolds about how we could, uh, fund this and, and as I kind of thought, the only way to do it would be to increase my time by five hours. Cause I'm at thirty-five hours, I can't go beyond forty. So, um, that, that would be the only thing. It would need, need to be funded. And, um, I thought the way to, the way I would approach it is to use those five hours on Fridays when I don't come into the office anyway. And it would be concentrated on just that one, that one thing on Fridays. So.
Is that because you're a town employee that we can't pay you as a consultant?
Right.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so Gino, you're okay with what was proposed?
Yeah, I, I'm pretty much okay. Um, I, I think it's going to take more, more than that. But, um, you know, I'll do the best I can on, on getting it. I, I thought the way to approach it to minimize the, the time is to just essentially edit what's there, uh, where, where there's a statistic to update it, not try to rewrite anything to, unless, except where it's no longer makes sense because of the new statistics. And, um, you know, that would minimize the, the rewriting. Usually when I do these, when I've done these for other towns, it, it ends up being a completely new report. Um, even when I've done the previous one. But, uh, in this case, to just to minimize the task, uh, I would just go through and, and update where it needs to be updated and, and that's it.
I think that's fair because I think it's, it's a matter of saying that it's an updated plan, making sure that the census and the numbers and the demographics are, those numbers are updated. Um, I don't think we're in a, you know, in, in, you know, hopefully in three years, when we have to be planning to do this again, we'll be in a place where we can then get, you know, a little more excited about thinking of novel ways to, um, update, you know, you know, think about how do we want to look further into the future? Right now, we're kind of in the same place where we were unfortunately five years ago. And so it's hard to get, generate enthusiasm and do, you know, workshops and get people engaged and think of it right now, our goal is to just make sure that we're updated with our numbers and maps and demographics. So I'm sorry that we, I know that you're not getting what you would normally get for writing a housing production plan by just tacking on extra hours. Um, so I'm sorry that didn't work. It's just the way it is, but I really appreciate you doing this, Gino.
Sure.
Does anyone else have any other questions?
I was just gonna say that, uh, for what it's worth, if I can be of any help, I, I don't know what the timeframe is, but, um, I do have summers off, so I have time coming up. And even before then, I'm keenly interested in this, it'd be educational for me. So I don't know if I'd be a huge help, but I can definitely pitch in numbers when it comes to light edits or organization.
Well, I think it has to be done by June. So summers.
I can make time between that. Anyway, I'm, I, I just offering myself if I can be.
All right. So I was just saying, you can find something else.
Right. I mean, certainly, I, I think between Elizabeth and I, you know, we certainly are willing to, you know, take a segment or if you have a segment. But I know the mapping is a big part and it's also something, Gino, if we look at, if there's a certain couple of maps that we know need to be updated, we can reach out and contract for MAPC to do that part of it because we can pay them to do that part so that you can use your hours to do the other things. So, um, let's make sure we're using your time wisely.
Right, okay.
All right, on the agenda, did, um, did Frank and Elizabeth run through the slides from Maple Street?
Not yet, no.
Okay, um, well, if, if we have no other business, which I don't think we do, would Frank and Elizabeth like to take it over? Frank, I don't know if you saw my suggestion. Have you, have you thought about how you want to divide up the slides?
We're ready. We've got a dry run.
Let's do it.
Frank, you're muted. Frank, you're muted. Step one, unmute Frank.
Frank, unmute.
You. So I was just going to say that after the, uh, the presentation, you guys can give all your criticisms and critiques. Let's get through it first.
Now I'm going to be timing you.
All right, you go in time. Good evening. My name is Frank Cook. I'm a member of the Planning Board. And, uh, the goal for this warrant article is to increase pedestrian safety for the Maple and Washington Street intersection. To implement an ADA, ADA compliance, attain traffic calming and improve traffic flow in that part of town. What we're aiming to, uh, to obtain for this evening is engine, the engineering for around about repair of five hundred feet of sidewalk and the addition of ADA compliant crosswalks. Roundabouts are nothing new. In nineteen ninety-four, the, uh, committee in town proposed a traffic light at that intersection and was withdrawn due to fierce citizen objections. Roundabout was first proposed in nineteen ninety-six and again in two thousand and three. So roundabouts have, uh, safety benefits. They also have, uh, benefits during, uh, power outage, continuing the function and improved sidelines. This image shows the, uh, benefits of reduced collision or incident points. Where roundabouts have about sixteen potential and traffic signals or storeways, four-way stops, about fifty, uh, accident points. The environmental benefits also include, uh, reduced exhaust emissions, improved fuel consumption, minimizing the stormwater runoff. And it has the added benefit of not having to wait for traffic vice special when there's nobody coming. At this point, I'd like to, uh, pass the, um, mic or to Elizabeth, uh, Wendorf, my colleague on the planning board.
Thank you so much, Frank, for telling us about all the benefits of a roundabout. Um, this view is shared by our neighbors in Norfolk who put in a roundabout at one fifteen and one A. And you can see on your handout that we gave you a longer quote from their police chief Chuck Stone. But the gist is that this is a highly recommended, um, strategy to reducing traffic congestion and improving safety as Frank described. And also adding an aesthetic component to an intersection. As you can see, it's really nice looking intersection in Norfolk. Um, we also have local support for this from our police chief Gavin and fire chief Ward, who both are in favor of creating this roundabout. Um, so how are we going to fund this? Well, um, we are interested in using Complete Streets funding for the Mass uh, DOT, which is a program that provides funding for the construction of safe and accessible travel modes for people of all ages and abilities, walking, biking, transit and vehicles. So bef, this complete streets funding is not new to us. As a town, we've used it for several projects that you've seen and enjoyed, hopefully, over the past few years and some upcoming projects as well. Um, so this is funding that we're, we're, we have acquired before. Um, but so what, what our plan is today is to ask you for, to authorize the funding for the engineering study. And hopefully if we can get the engineering study and access the complete streets funding, we'll be able to get this project going. And by summer of twenty twenty-three, you'll have a beautiful new intersection to enjoy. And again, the goal of this project is to create a town that is safer and more accessible for all types of transportation. Um, and for us to enjoy. Thank you so much for your time.
Three and a half minutes. You want it?
I love it.
Thank you, Addie May.
Okay, so.
I'll tell you the truth.
Can I make a comment?
Well, I, I was gonna say, yeah, now we were gonna open it up for some comments. Rob?
Um, I, I think you do have to go a little slower because you flicked through a couple of those slides faster than I could read them and I'm a pretty fast reader. So, you know, each time you put up a slide, if, you know, depending on how much information is in it, you, you have to make sure that slide stays up long enough for a person to look at it and digest it.
Yeah, I had, I had the same thought and I was wondering, I, I think we talked about having the handout be front and back, which I think is good, but I wonder if we'd want to have some more of this slide info in the handout as well, in addition to slowing down a little bit, Rob?
Yeah, I mean, you certainly can, if you want to take it out of the presentation that you go over and just have it in a handout for people to look at on their own time, that's fine, but you know, don't, don't put a fairly complex slide up there and then give me less than ten seconds to look at it. That's just gonna make people crazy.
Yeah, I mean, I think we could, um, I don't know if you want to try going through it one more time. Um, Frank, your timing was fine. Elizabeth, you were faster, but sometimes that's just nerves from speaking quickly because you feel like you just want everybody waiting for you to rush through, so.
Well, we, you know, Frank and I did it a few times and we went, we stayed longer on the slides. The first time we did it, it took us about a little over five minutes, Frank, if I recall. And that time I had gone through and sort of said, these are some of the projects that you've seen. And then we decided that that was too much. And so maybe we should just cut the details from the slides if I'm not going to go into it. Um, what do you guys think? I don't know.
Um, I, I would leave, I mean, we're going to have a whole separate handout for everybody. You finished it three and a half minutes, so I think if we extended it to four minutes, I think probably Rob's concerns would be addressed. I like the format. I like the slides. You guys want to do it one more time?
Absolutely. And any other comments before we, we do?
Just one, one, uh, accuracy comment, the Norfolk roundabout is on one fifteen, but it's not at the intersection with one A. It's with the inner, Main Street intersection. One fifteen and Main Street.
Did you know when that was done?
Uh, in the mid-two thousands, I believe.
And we'll have the full letter in, in the handout and we'll have a bunch of, I mean, so Frank and I sat down and we, we pulled slides out that we would also, that, you know, I'll pass out as people come in. And if another member or two want to, you know, we can pass things out because people have a lot of time. And so there are some things that we can give them that they can read ahead of time. But again, we can, we can, we easily can add half a minute to this, which I think will take care of Rob's thoughts. So whenever you guys are ready.
If you don't mind, if you don't mind, if I, if I can just go to this one particular slide, you know, these, uh, these two slides right here. I don't know that it helps to, to spend time talking about the projects that we have done. Really the point that we're trying to make with these two slides is that we've done a number of projects and some of them have been done and some of them are going to be done. Uh, and that we have the experience, um, with the Complete Streets projects.
Well, what if we, what if we condense that and sort of make it quicker, just like Pine Hill, North Main and no funding and no dates?
I was thinking it would be nice to just have pictures.
Yeah.
With a caption instead of dollar amounts and project titles.
Well, Frank has pictures linked.
I do like having more pictures. I mean, if you're sitting there at town meeting and your eyes are starting to get glazed over after dealing with a whole bunch of budget stuff, it's nice to have some pictures to look at. So, um, we can have the list with the dollar amounts on the handout perhaps. And with this, but presentations do lend themselves well to pictures.
Yeah, I love that idea.
This is linking to a picture of that takes a little too long, but, you know, good idea. Nice, pretty sidebar.
That sounds great.
So what I'll also do is I feel as though I was the one that was, was pushing Elizabeth to talk faster by moving the slides faster on her. So Elizabeth, uh, before we go through this a second time, is there a way that you want to tell me to, uh, to move the slides or?
Yeah, I'll nod. Does that work?
Yeah, the problem is I'm trying to, to keep this sidebar in such a place where it doesn't cover the information that you or I need to talk from. So, um, but yeah, that, that will work, uh, because I could see in my, my recording, we're not talking anymore. I can look a little bit more at.
Can we ask them one more question, Frank? Um, Frank, if you go down to slide twenty-three, we actually, it's a picture that you and I decided to cut, the artistic rendering. And I wonder if the playing board, to your point, Addie, about having more pictures, thinks that this is not an act. I don't know where this picture came from, but I don't think it's totally accurate because obviously we don't have it yet. But do you think this is useful to the presentation?
Um, and Gino, actually, would you, I, I just want to make sure that any picture we put up is not something that's going to raise people's concerns about taking. And I'm a little concerned with this drawing goes on to the church property more than I believe we. And I'm a little concerned with this drawing goes on to the church property more than I believe we have learned it would actually need to. And so that would be my only concern with opening that can of worms because it's not the current drawing. We potentially might have a better drawing prior, but because we've got the initial survey work done and we're working to get the new kind of firm get numbers, but I don't, and I don't know if they'd have a preliminary drawing or not in time, but that is my concern that this drawing, I believe, was the older plan that was from maybe 1996, and if you look at it, the church people who are involved with the church are going to get concerned about the land taking there. And I believe that since that this drawing, we've learned we don't need to use as big of a space.
And this is not what we're asking for all, so is for an engineering for something to come up like this, so why would we show something that is really what it is that we're asking for? Which is, and the other thing is what you say about it, I mean, you showed the picture of it. This is what it could look like, but then what further do you say? Evidence starting to explain around about, then it ends up taking a lot of time, and they're explaining for around about and explaining that, yeah, we wouldn't take as much of the church's land. You spend time in detail, that's not really part of what it is, what's trying to accomplish. Was my, was my reason for.
No, I agree. I think that was why we took it out, and I just wanted to make sure that was.
Right.
I was just gonna say that, I was just gonna say that I like, I like the picture because when I imagine going through this intersection, it's hard for me to think about a roundabout. Because I feel like the angles of the roads don't lend themselves to it. And so as you were going through your presentation, I was actually on Google Maps, on Street View, like on the aerial, looking at what does this intersection look like? And it's more square than I realized, because when you're on it, it feels like everyone's coming at you from, from around these curves that you can't see. And it didn't, like, until I looked at it on Google Maps, I didn't see. Maybe we don't need to show the roundabout, but maybe we show the intersection that we're talking about next to the Norfolk one or something, just so that like.
Maybe I can come up with something using Google Maps and Illustrator software that's more rustic, but that maybe just overlays a basic roundabout somehow. Some, we can come up with something that's, if we don't have something from a preliminary, we have something that doesn't show land being taken away from the church.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I just feel like, I feel like the curve is greater when you're, when you're, when I look at the map, it looks more like a T intersection. But when I'm sitting on the intersection, I feel like the curvature is so great because you can't see anyone coming and they're going so fast. And I, until today, was like, how in the world would a roundabout work here? But now that I'm looking at it on Google Maps, like, and seeing an aerial, it feels a little more feasible to me.
Eddie May? Eddie May?
Yes.
Do you think this could be redrawn with the, with the edge near the church, just as you said, just a little bit north?
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think we could, I could probably take something like this and make a slightly, we would have to make sure people don't realize that that's not an engineered drawing, that, that we have assurances that we're, you know, and we'll know the answer, but, but just so that people don't get up in arms, but just to give it, this is a real rustic.
The wording that I have here on the top is that, and I would underscore those words as well, is that this is an artistic rendition. This is not actually what I was looking for, that we're looking for the engineering. You know, to get the exact details of what, how this would exactly work.
Okay.
Right.
All right, so the vote, yeah, so the vote is to put in a picture, but put in something in an illustration that shows sort of less land taking on the church side. Is that what we're agreeing on?
Yes.
Okay, Frank, take it away.
Good evening. My name is Frank Cook from the planning board. The goal for this warrant article is to increase the pedestrian safety of the Maple and Washington Street intersection. Adding ADA compliance, attaining traffic calming and improved traffic flow for this part of town. We're asking for the engineering for a roundabout, the repair of 500 feet of sidewalk, and the addition of ADA compliant crosswalks. The town has been looking at this intersection and prefers a roundabout. In 1994, a four-way traffic light was proposed, and the warrant was withdrawn due to fierce citizens' objections. In 1996 and 2003, roundabouts were proposed. Roundabouts offer a much safer approach than traffic lights. Offer, continue to function during power outages, and improve sidelines for traffic. In this image, the orange and blue dots show the potential.
So Frank's frozen, so something happened, because.
Can I make a comment while we're waiting?
Please.
Um, I feel like it's a little bit, like, when you talk about the need for pedestrian safety at the beginning and improving traffic flow. I feel like it's a little bit, it would be, connect more with people if it's a pedestrian and vehicle safety. I know that's not the, I know that's not the, like, the primary goal of the project, but I think that, like, there's been so many postings on Nextdoor and Facebook lately about the accidents that have happened there, that it almost feels like it's tone deaf to not include vehicle safety as well as pedestrian safety.
I think you're right. I mean, I think Frank thought he was doing that, but somehow the words, maybe the ordering of the words didn't come out, didn't come across that way.
Well, well, in the safety bullet, it just says pedestrian, right? And then it talks about traffic flow, but that's different than.
Yeah, it says traffic calming. It says calming, but it doesn't say, like, stop accidents. I think that's a good point.
Right.
Sorry about that. My internet just disappeared.
Well, then I would throw in traffic calming and safety.
Sure.
So Frank, Steph was making a comment that on slide two, if you really say specifically that it could reduce traffic, vehicular, meaning improved vehicular safety, so I'm just gonna add that here.
Traffic calming and safety, that third bullet.
Yeah. I think it's, Frank needs to project again to make it.
Um, yeah, I was just, one other comment. I had, I'm sorry, I was so late with this. I was traveling and I only got back last night, so I sent out some comments this morning. But, you know, I had suggested a couple of changes to them, and, well, I went right for the jugular on the comments I put as the very first bullet. Reduce crashes at one of the most dangerous intersections in Sherburne. I don't think you can be more clear than that.
I like that.
And along those same lines, Liz, when you were talking about the support from the fire and the police chief, I felt like it would be appropriate to say in that slide, like, these are the people who have to respond to the vehicle, to the crashes.
Well, I guess, I mean, I was, Frank and I felt the same way, but when we looked into the actual numbers, it wasn't like as astounding high as you would think. So it didn't, didn't like, it felt a little bit inflammatory. I don't know. I just wanted to.
That's fair.
And another, and another point is that we're trying to be objective in what it is that we're selling and not, others could provide the emotional part, and it could actually be even stronger. You know, if somebody from Maple Street comes up and, you know, talks about their fighting, the reason they don't like it, and the police chief stands up and says, yeah, and this is our concern with this, this is our problem with this, it just now underscores it, so that we're not in that emotional part of it. So it's just, it's a strategy, you know, and there's different ways of looking at that strategy, you know, so.
All right, you want to, you want to roll again?
Okay. Okay, with any luck, my Wi-Fi won't cut out on me. Chris, you're ready to go with that stopwatch?
Yep.
All right, three, two, one. Hello, my name is Frank Cook. I'm on the planning board. And my goal in presenting this warrant article is to talk about the increased safety of pedestrians at the Maple and Washington Street intersection. To make this intersection ADA compliant, attain traffic calming and safety while improving traffic flow through this part of town. Asking for the engineering for a roundabout, the repair of 500 feet of sidewalk, and the addition of ADA compliant crosswalks. Sherburne has looked at this intersection before proposing a traffic light at that intersection, but it was, the warrant article was withdrawn due to fierce citizens' objections. Roundabouts were proposed in 1996 and 2003. Why were roundabouts proposed? Because they are safer than traffic lights. They continue to operate during power outages and the improved sidelines. This image shows the difference between the accident or conflict points in a roundabout versus a four-way intersection, whether to be stoplights or traffic stop signs. 16 total accident points versus 50. Environmental benefits include the reduction of exhaust emissions and improved fuel economy while cars idle at red lights and minimize stormwater runoff. An added benefit is not having to wait for traffic lights when there's no traffic coming. Elizabeth Wendor, my colleague in the planning board, will continue the presentation.
Thank you so much, Frank. This idea of a roundabout is also been recommended by our neighbors in Norfolk. They put in a roundabout at Route 15 and Main Street. Their police chief Chuck Stone told us that their accident rate of 35 to 40 accidents a year was reduced to zero after the roundabout went in. And they had a significant reduction in congestion, so he wholly recommends the change, to say the least. Additionally, we have local support from police chief Gavin and police chief Ward, who I will note are the first responders in cases of incidents that are not safe in that current intersection. So their recommendation is strong. How will we fund this project? There's a program called Complete Streets sponsored by the, by Mass DOT. That is a program that provides funding for the construction of safe and accessible travel modes for people of all ages and abilities, walking, cycling, transit, and vehicles. This is not a new program for Sherburne. We have used this program, as you can see in all these pictures, in places that you've seen and benefited from, I hope. North Main sidewalks, Pine Hill project, Trailhead access, upcoming projects on the Sanger Street sidewalks, and South Main crosswalks. So what is the plan? Today at town meeting, we are asking for approval for the engineering and design. We will then apply to the Complete Streets program grant funding. Come back to annual town meeting next year for project approval and hopefully build the roundabout next summer, so we can all enjoy it by the end of summer 2023. Again, this project is really important to improving the functionality of our town and allowing us to enjoy safe and more efficient travel for pedestrians, vehicles, and cyclists. Thank you so much for your time.
Perfect. Any other comments?
How long did that take us?
Three minutes and 50 seconds.
Well, there we go.
So.
So we need the pictures and the roundabout picture.
Yep.
Great.
And the dry run will be on the 26th. That'll be a zoomer, and, and, and maybe we can, maybe a couple of us can get together one time before the, before advisory and go over it. And if you want to do it at my house, I'll provide beer or wine. Does anyone else have any other?
Make it shorter.
Yeah, Gina, did you see the, I guess, Washington Maple Street roundabout is on advisory for tomorrow night, which I guess, I think they're looking more at the financial rather than this presentation, and I know Sean's still trying to get the numbers. But Gina, do you have any thoughts on, you know, this doesn't need to necessarily be for tomorrow? Yes.
Eddie May, I've spoken to Steve, and I told him there will be a presentation on Bloody Saturday, and basically, this, tomorrow is just gonna be a quick chat.
Got it. Cool. Glad you got that covered.
Will there be a dollar amount in the slides or just in the warrant article?
We are hoping there'll be a dollar amount in the slides, but we don't have that dollar amount for the engineering yet.
Okay.
Yeah, so in that slide where it says we're asking for the engineering for the roundabout, I would say we're asking for this amount of money for the engineering and blah, blah, blah.
Yep. So, does anyone else have any other questions? Okay, over the next week or so, Frank and Elizabeth, I'll be around, so if you want to chat, I'm all ears. I'd love to, I'd love to help any way I can. Does anyone else have any other thoughts about this? Does anyone else have, I'm sorry, go ahead, Frank?
I'm sorry. Addie May, you had mentioned that you were going to try to do something with the picture and the overlay. Is there, I'll put that in as the placeholder, the one that I currently have. So I guess that'll take a little bit, the pressure off having to get it done too soon, but, you know, if we can get it sometime in that, a couple of days before that advisory hearing.
Yep.
Then I'll take it out of there. There's the only thing I wanted to kind of lay out.
Okay. Does anyone else? Yep, good work. Does anyone else have any other comments on anything before we adjourn? So Addie May, I have one question. Do we have a hearing next meeting?
Yes. I'm not adding anybody, yes.
Okay. Is, is there anything else that we're missing? Excuse me?
I thought Addie May was trying to talk, but she's muted.
Sorry, I had my kids asking me something, so, sorry.
That's okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Second.
Do I have a second? A second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Addie May?
Aye. Aye.
Will?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Rob?
Hi.
And Chris and I, have a great evening, everyone. We'll see you, I don't know, on and off over the next couple of weeks. And again, if you guys want to work on that stuff, I'm around, all right? Everyone have a great night. Thank you.
Bye.
All right, thanks, everyone.
Everybody.